All right.
Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting. It is Wednesday, June eight, July 18, and the time is 6:30. So I'd like to call to order.
Thank you. We would like to welcome to the podium Laura Taylor to introduce our pledge speaker guest.
Good evening Chair, members of board. It's my pleasure to introduce a fellow planner in the region named Sheri Abbas-Metzger, and she's going to lead us in the pledge.
All right, wonderful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just say a few words about Sheri. She's been active in the planning profession in this region for a number of years. You have in your packet tonight item G1, which concerns a consultant agreement for development review with Ms. Metzger. And she and I have had the pleasure of sharing stories about planning and different personalities that we've come across in the development community, in the planning community. And I've found that she has quite a bit of knowledge that's very helpful. And so I'm pleased to introduce her, and she's going to talk a little bit about herself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Thank you very much for having me. As Laura said, my name is Sheri Metzger. I have been a city planner for, I hate to say it now, over 30 years. Should color my hair, it might disguise it a bit. Anyway, for the better part of my career, I spent my time at the city of Rockland. When I got there, I was hired on as a senior planner, which is, of course, a journey level position. And when I left there 23 years later, I was the Community Development Director. During that time, Rockland went from a population of just about 19,000 people to a population of about 65,000 people. And some days, I felt like I personally had approved every permit that took to build that much development. I can tell you with 100% certainty that there is no type of land use development or permit or application that I haven't had an opportunity to work on. We did many, many master planned communities in that city, and I actually was fortunate to have stayed there long enough to see many of them actually nearly reach build out. You know, with commercial development, it always seems to lag a lot further behind than residential. But for the most part, Rockland considers itself built out. And that's a pretty big achievement in such a short amount of time. When I left Rockland, I went to work at a private sector engineering firm. And then from there, I went to work as a consultant with the city of Folsom. And I helped entitle all of the projects that are on the south of 50 area. So again, that was the implementation of yet another master plan, as you, I'm sure, are very well aware. It's about 10,000 dwelling units and probably close to 30,000 additional people when it's built. And they have already started building and moving dirt out there. So it won't be long, and we'll be seeing residents in that neighborhood. And other kinds of development, I'm sure, as time moves on, they are too in a built out or nearly built out situation. And so the south of 50 is their future. So when Laura and Christina contacted me and said, you know, we could use somebody with some general land use planning background, I said, yeah, I have that.
And some.
And so we've talked, as Laura said, and so my, or her request, I should say, is on your docket for this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't think so. I wanted to welcome you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll ask our questions when it comes up on the action items. But I also know that our planning department is really swamped, and there's a lot of good things they're making. So I'm glad that you'll be able to join our team for some time and help us out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, so we are going to the roll call.
Thank you Chair Reyes. We received a mass notification that Director Lineback would be absent this evening. Director Sloan. Secretary Danzel.
Here.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Here.
And Chair Reyes.
Here. All right, board disclosures on any action items? Have we had any? Okay. All right, so let's move on to item B.
Thank you Chair Reyes. Item B, comments by the public on non-agenda items. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, so with no speaker cards, we are going to move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have three items for your consideration. Item C1 is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors on June 20, 2018. Item C2 is the district financial report for May 2018. And item C3 is to adopt resolution 18/19-1, accepting the notice of completion for the Lincoln Village Park Course project.
Okay, so any, any subjects you'd like to pull? First, I'll ask the directors, any of the items, and staff?
Yes Chair Reyes, I'd like to pull item C1 for a separate vote, please.
Wonderful. If we don't have any more questions or items or clarifications we need, then I'd like to hear a motion to approve the consent calendars items.
I'll make a motion, we accept consent calendar items C2 and C3.
So moved by Director, by Secretary Danzel and seconded by Director Sloan. All those in favor? Roll call, vote.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Secretary Danzel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Okay, so we've got that. Now we will, I need a motion for the item C1 vote.
I make a motion, we approve item C1 of the consent calendar.
Moved by Secretary Danzel, seconded by Vice Chair Yearwood. Roll call, vote.
Director Sloan. Secretary Danzel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Reyes.
Abstain.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Thank you. Time to move on to item D, presentations.
We have none this time.
Okay, committee reports.
Also none this time.
All right, so we are going to move on to the public hearing.
Thank you Chair Reyes. This is the time of the meeting for public hearings. Item F1 is to adopt resolution 18/19-2, approving the engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering the levy of assessment for fiscal year 2018-19 for the Independence at Mather landscaping and lighting assessment district.
With that, I would like to open the public hearing, and the time is 6:38.
And we'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
Good evening Chair Reyes. Vice Chair Yearwood and Board members. So tonight, I wanted to say secretary, but that was last year, so I apologize. We utilize Francisco and Associates as our tax engineer firm for our consulting services that produces these reports. And so with us tonight, we have Brian Brown, who's a principal with the firm. He has 12 to 13 years of experience in the field in planning and project management, budget analysts, development of the special assessment and tax formulas, and presentations, which is wonderful. That's why he's going to be part of today's, tonight's proceedings. So I'd like to welcome Brian Brown, and he's going to go ahead and walk us through these public hearings and then our regular business calendar items.
Well, good evening. We'll start off by giving you guys some background on what's happening with the Independence at Mather Assessment District. The Independence at Mather Assessment District was formed in 2000, and that Assessment District maintains landscaping, park and recreational improvements in the Independence at Mather subdivision, and specifically Veterans Park and Independence Park. Tonight is the third step in the annual three-step process to approve the annual assessments each year. On March, there's been two prior actions, and tonight's the third. The first action was on March 21, 2018, the board directed staff to prepare a preliminary engineer's report. On June 20, which was the second action, the board approved the preliminary engineer's report and set the public hearing for July 18, which brings us to tonight, the third action. What we're looking to have occur tonight is to hold the public hearing, take public testimony, approve the final engineer's report, and authorize a levy of assessments for fiscal year 2018-19. The fiscal year 2018-19 maximum assessment rates are proposed to increase by 3.2% that over the prior year's maximum assessment rates. And we're also proposing that the maximum assessment rates be what's levied this year, as has been done historically. The fiscal year 2018-19 assessment rates are based upon the change in the Bay Area CPI or 3%, and it's the greater of the two. That's why we have a 3.22% increase, which is, equates to the Bay Area CPI. And the maximum assessment rates are proposed to actually increase from $161, or $161.48, which was the maximum amount last year, to $166.68 for a $520, or a $5.20 increase year over year. And all single-family homes in the, in this assessment district pay the same amount, and it's projected that this assessment district will generate approximately $212,000 in revenue. We're here for any questions you guys may have as well.
Thank you. So I'd like to invite the public to comment. Do we have any public comment? All right. So now with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and the time is Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, then we will go ahead, and I would like to call for the vote.
Chair, I move the Board of Directors adopt resolution 18, or 18/19-2, approving the engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year 2018-19 for the Independence of Mather Landscaping and Lighting District Assessment District.
Moved by Secretary Danzel, seconded by.
I'll second that.
Vice Chair Yearwood. Roll call, vote.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Secretary Danzel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
All right, thank you. So we are going to move on to the second public hearing, which is F2.
Thank you Chair Reyes. Item F2 is to adopt resolution 18/19-3, approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year 2018-19 for the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, and the time is 6:45. Am I right? 6:45. All right, so I would like to bring on staff to present the item.
And since Brian came a long ways from Carlsbad, I'll let him continue on with the, with the public hearing.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
So for the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement Assessment District, this district's been in place for about 12 years. It was formed in 2006. Again, it maintains a lot of the similar type of improvements as the independent Mather Assessment District does, landscaping, recreational improvements, parks, things of that nature. Tonight's going to be the third action. Would you like me to go through each of the three actions again?
No, I think we're good with that. Thank you very much, Brian.
So tonight's, you know, the public hearing, we're asking that again, we hold the public hearing, we take public testimony, approve the final engineer's report, and authorize a levy of assessments for the upcoming fiscal year. The rates are proposed to increase by 3% over the prior year's maximum rate. Now, the escalation factor for this is based upon the change between the San Francisco Bay Area CPI, but it's capped at 3%, which is why we can only increase by 3% this year. With that, the maximum assessment rate for a single-family home is going to increase from $26.05 to $26.82 per home, netting a 79 cent increase year over year.
Okay.
The revenue projected to be generated from this assessment district is $1,001,0700 for fiscal year 2018-19. And that concludes the report, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so I'd like to see and invite the public to comment. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. The time is 6:47. Are there any questions from the board? Thank you. Secretary Danzel.
Thank you Chair Reyes. Brian, can you give me the, the max amount this is going to be this year? Because I see if it's, I want to make sure I didn't hear incorrectly. So it's 2682.
Two.
Okay, our paperwork says 2683.
Oh, okay, so forgive me, 2683 is the maximum amount, but we can only place even-dollar installments on the tax roll?
Okay.
So there's a penny rounding that occurs, so what the, so what the property owners will actually see is 2682.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I had.
Very good. Thank you. I really appreciated your educating us on why, because I was going to ask that, how is it that you've got 3% here and then 3.2 in the other one, right? So I'm like, okay, so there was, there is a cap for the PMR ID. I wonder, is there a cap for the, I'm directing this to our district administrator, is there a cap for the Measure J? Do we have any escalation? Do we have any?
I'd like to confirm, but I don't think that one, I think this is the only one that has.
Escalation?
A cap, and Sunrise might as well, but I'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
And Brian might actually know when we get to it.
And I can touch on that when we present on the CFD on what the escalation factor is for each one.
Perfect, that would be great. All right, so if there are no other questions for the board, then I will call for a vote.
I'll make a motion first.
Yes.
I move the Board of Directors adopt resolution 18/19-3, approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year 2018-19 for the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
Thank you. Moved by Director Sloan.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Yearwood. Roll call.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Secretary Danzel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
So motion carried. All right. So at this time, we are going to move on to the regular calendar items, yes?
Thank you Chair Reyes. Item G1 is to authorize the district administrator to execute a consultant services agreement with Sheri Abbas-Metzger in an amount not to exceed $40,000 to provide general planning and development review services. And I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Laura Taylor.
Good evening again Chair Reyes and members of the board. So development review requests have increased substantially in the past year, and existing planning staff is fully loaded without the increase in development review requests. A consultant services agreement would allow the park planning department to respond to requests in a timely manner as needed without neglecting our existing project assignments. As you know, we've got a pretty big load with the Measure J, my parks enhancement projects, as well as the Cordova community pool moving forward. So that's, it'll be a substantial help to us. So property owners within the boundaries of the Cordova Recreation Park District are moving forward to seek approvals from the city of Rancho Cordova or Sacramento County, depending on where their property is located. And we are required to respond to those submittals within 30 days, no matter what we have going on, right? And so we currently have nine specific plan areas within the district boundaries that are at various phases of the entitlement approval, and another four that are positioned to move forward at any time. So as we worked through the budget requests this year, we took a hard look at different ways that we could accomplish the workload. And planning reviews are very unpredictable. It's a very much hurry up and wait kind of approach, where a developer will make a submittal and you need to respond within 30 days, and then you may hear immediately afterwards what their response is, or you might not hear for six months. It's very difficult to predict. So we determined that using an, a consultant on an hourly, as-needed basis was the most effective for the near term. And the CRPD's ordinance 0607-1 requires developers to reimburse the district for costs associated with review of their projects. So use of a planning consultant to review development projects will allow the district to fully recover all of our costs from the developers. The only work the consultant will perform is work that is directly associated with specific development reviews. And all the work that is prepared will be reviewed and approved by me as the Park Planning and Development Manager prior to issuing it outside of our agency. So payment to the consultant will be out of the general fund and then reimbursed to the district by invoicing developers through the cost recovery process. And the cost for the consultant planner and the development reimbursements have been included in the fiscal year 2018-19 preliminary budget. So upon approval of the board's, upon the board's approval of this contract, we will go ahead and execute it, and I will begin assigning some development review projects immediately because we do have an urgent need. So I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Does the board have any questions? I'm glad that you were able to find someone very capable to, to help out, and I'm, I'm pleased that you'll be able to focus, because we do have park projects that have to be moving, and yes, there's a lot of building and permits and developments out there. So I will entertain a motion to move.
Chair Reyes, I move the Board of Directors authorize the district administrator to execute a consultant services agreement with Sheri Abbas-Metzger in the amount not to exceed $40,000 to provide general planning and development review services.
So we have a motion moved by Secretary Danzel and seconded by Director Sloan. Roll call, vote.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Secretary Danzel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Welcome. You are going to be busy, I am so sure. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to the next item G2.
Yes, thank you Chair Reyes. The next several items are pertaining to the tax reports for our CFDs. So item G2 is to adopt resolution 18/19-4, approving the annual tax report and levying a special tax within community facilities, just district number 01-01, Villages of Zimfandel, for fiscal year 2018-19, to finance certain public services in and for such community facilities district. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
So our report this evening is going to be in a similar format to what we heard for the landscape and lighting districts. The Villages of Zimfandel, CFD 0101, was formed in 2001. It's authorized to pay for similar type services, maintenance of parks, parkways, open space, landscaping, bike paths, things of that nature. Tonight, the board will formally approve the fiscal year 2018-19 maximum special tax rates, as well as, we're looking to levy the maximum special tax rates as well this year. The fiscal year 2018-19 special tax rates will be increased by the change in the Bay Area CPI or 4%, whichever is less. So we can see that before, we were looking at the greater of with caps. This is Bay Area CPI or 4%, but the lesser of. So though, it will be increasing by 3.22% again. The maximum special tax rates for a single-family home are proposed to increase from $328.20 last year to $338.77 this year for a difference of $10.57. The projected revenue to be generated from the CFD is approximately $923,000. This CFD can be levied in perpetuity to pay for services.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have any questions from the board? No questions? Well, thank you. This, you know, that clarification, so there's 4%. So it's quite interesting how, how these things go, and you have to really watch for that. Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the Board of Directors adopt resolution 18/19, no, slash 19-4, approving annual tax report and levying a special tax within the community facility district number 01-01, Villages of Zimfandel, for the fiscal year 2018-19, to finance certain public service in and for such, in for such community facility district.
Thank you. Moved by Vice Chair Yearwood and seconded by Secretary Danzel. Roll call, vote.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Secretary Danzel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move on to item G3.
Item G3 is to adopt resolution 18/19-5, approving annual tax report and levying a special tax within community facilities, district number 04-01, Sunrise, for fiscal year 2018-19, to finance certain public services in and for such community facilities district.
Okay, so the Sunrise CFD was formed in 2004, and it was authorized to pay for the same types of services as the Villages of Zimfandel. This special tax can be levied in perpetuity for services, but can actually pay for the acquisition and construction of the same type of facilities as well. But you can only use the special tax monies through fiscal year 2064-65 for that purpose. Starting in fiscal year 2065-66, the money can only be used for services.
Oh, that's, that's, that's very interesting.
Got a lot of time, so right now, it can be used for both, but after that point, it will only be able to be used for services.
Okay.
So operation, maintenance, things of that.
So capital, projects and all that, acquisitions, no, after the 2064?
Right.
Yeah, acquisition and new construction is what that relates to. So that was Measure S that we, that we passed in 2013.
Okay.
And it was only a 30-year, 40-year clause on that one, yeah.
So tonight, what we're looking to do is approve the maximum special tax rates and proposing to levy the maximum special tax rates as well for fiscal year 2018-19. The maximum special tax rates are proposed to increase by the greater of the change in the Bay Area CPI, which was 3.22%, or the Pacific West Cities, all urban wage earners and. and clerical workers index, which was 2.89%. Therefore, we're increasing by 3.22%. The maximum special tax rate for a single-family home will increase from $396.98 from last year to $409.77 this year for a difference of $12.79. And this CFD is projected to generate approximately $1.8 million.
So, do we have any questions from our board members? For, therefore, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolutions 18/19-5 approving annual tax report and levying a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 04-01 Sunridge for fiscal year 2018-19 to finance certain public services in and for such community facilities district.
So, we have it moved by Director Sloan?
Second.
And seconded by Secretary Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Thank you. G4.
Thank you Chair Reyes. Item G4 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-6 approving the annual tax report and levying a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 2016-01, which is the My Parks Enhancement Fund for fiscal year 2018-19 to finance certain public services in and for such community facilities district. And for this item, and I'd like to note that the resolution has been amended and has been distributed at the dais, and Mr. Brown can review those changes.
Okay.
So, I believe, don't have a copy of that in front of me, but I believe the change was associated with the term. And that it stated that Measure J can only be taxed through 2045-46, and it's to pay for services. And I believe the original resolution stated in perpetuity. So, this one has a sunset clause.
Okay.
And that's what the adjustment was.
All right.
So, furthermore, we have, the CFD was formed 2006, CFD 2016-1, also called Measure J. It pays for the same types of services that we talked about with the prior CFDs, just on a larger, broader scale. The rate for single-family homes is proposed to increase from $50.10 last year to $51.70 this year for a difference of $1.60. And that increase is based upon the greater of the average increase in the Bay Area CPI, 3.22% or 3%. So, since, since it's the greater of, we'll be using the 3.22%.
Okay.
And the projected revenue that we are projecting at this point in time is $1.9 million from Measure J.
Okay. All right, so, do we have any questions from the board? We do have our amended resolution. So, what I would need is for a motion to approve the amended, as amended. Okay, so?
Madam Chair, I, I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 18/19-6 approving the annual tax report and levying a special tax within Community Facility District Number 2016-01 My Parks Enhancement Fund for fiscal year 2018-19 to finance certain public services in and for such community facility districts as amended.
Moved by Secretary Danzel, seconded by?
I'll second that motion.
Chair, Vice Chair Yearwood. Roll call.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Wonderful. So, we are going to move now to item G5.
Item G5 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-7 approving annual tax report and authorize not levying a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 2014-01 Montalena for fiscal year 2018-19 to finance certain public services in and for such community facilities district.
All right, so for the Montalena CFD, it was formed in 2014. It's one of your newer CFDs. Again, it's going to pay for the same types of services. However, again, it can, this one, I, I don't know about you guys, but, you know, we hear 2018, I haven't had to say 30 before. So, yeah, so this CFD can be, can levy for services in perpetuity, but it has the opportunity to also use those special taxes for the acquisition and construction of facilities through 301112.
Oh, my goodness.
It just seems odd to come off the tongue, so. Anyhow, so tonight, we're looking to formally approve the maximum special tax rates, and as stated, that there will be no special tax levy. The reason that there won't be a levy is because there aren't any improvements to maintain, and we don't envision there being any in the near future that would require us to levy the special tax.
Okay.
The maximum special tax rates are proposed to increase by the Bay Area CPI, 3.22%. Again, this is going to be a greater of 3% or the Bay Area, hence the 3.22%. The rates will go from 393.96 last year on a single-family home to $406.65 this year, net difference of $12.69. And again, the projected revenue is to be zero.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Well, I, I had just one question, and maybe our district administrator and yourself can answer it. When we did, obviously, we're not levying any taxes because there are no improvements. What, what is the plan in 10 years or less than for, of course, Ms. Laura Taylor?
Yeah, so for Montalena, that area, I'm not sure if we're having any activation in permits or reviews at this time. I know there is development, we are actually. So, maybe next year, there'll be some more activity going on in that area that we can possibly look to levy an assessment, but is that?
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah, next year.
I, it is the annual cycle. We're kind of at the beginning of it, so there's nothing in construction at this time. But going into this year, we are having them review some of those developments at this point. And so, this time next year, when we're here again, we may be levying those at that time.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's not 10 years?
No, it's actually.
So, it's maybe sooner than later?
That's the need for the consultant that we had earlier.
Yes.
They're activating a lot of development along the Douglas Boulevard and the Jackson Highway Corridor is coming along. It, it really is hit or miss. And so, they're hitting really hard on Douglas 98 and 208, as well as Montalena is starting. So, we're, we're starting to see a lot of uptick in that area.
Is Montalena the, the development that's going to have a large parcel of land that's where the community center or?
No, that's Rio de Loro.
Rio de Loro.
Yeah, so that one is on the opposite side of, this one is on Douglas, off of Douglas, I believe. Yep.
Oh, that's why.
So, no, that one is pending still. There's some talks about a developer interested in the top-left corner off of White Rock at this point, but it's just been kind of discussions at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you. So, I will entertain a motion for G5.
I'll move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 18/19-7 approving annual tax report and authorize not levying a special tax within Community Facility District Number 2014-01 Montalena for fiscal year 2018-19 to finance certain public services in and for such community facility district.
Thank you.
I'll second, I'll second.
Moved by Chair Yearwood and seconded by Director Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Thank you. So, we will move on to item G6.
Item G6 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-8 approving annual tax report and authorize not levying a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 2016-02 Glenborough and Easton Place for fiscal year 2018-19 to finance certain public services in and for such community facilities district.
Thank you.
All right, so the Glenborough CFD was formed in 2016 as well. It's authorized to pay for the same types of services, and the voters approved the special tax to be paid or to be used to pay for acquisition and construction of park and recreational facilities through 3015, fiscal year 3015-16. But again, the special tax can be levied in perpetuity for services. Tonight, we're asking the board to formally adopt the resolution to approve the maximum special tax rates, and that there will be no special tax levy for fiscal year 1819 because there aren't any improvements at this time to be maintained by the district. The maximum special tax rates are proposed to go up by the Bay Area CPI of 3.22%. Again, it's the greater of 3% or Bay Area CPI. The, a single-family residential home was levied $378.93 last year, and it will be levied $391.14 this year for a difference of $12.21. And, yeah, we're not projecting any special tax revenue this year.
Okay. Any questions? So, that means to say that the assessment value keeps going up because of the CPI rate and all this, and when it's time, it starts off at that amount, right?
Yeah, that's why.
When it's time to levy taxes, or, or the amount that it, it reaches by that time.
So, yeah, depending on how improvements come over and the services are maintained, it'll either be hit at the max or a lower amount.
Okay.
Depending on, you know.
On the startup?
Yeah. And when you're supposed to take, when you take over the improvements and what your costs will look like for that year.
Okay. All right. Okay.
The reason they escalate is because, you know, if, when dollars stay flat, you know, there's inflation, things like that.
Yes.
And the whole point in keeping it tied to an index is to try to keep that dollar to keep the same power that it has today in the future.
So, if I recall, there's only one that holds us to the 3%?
The cap.
Cap. The rest are CPI or 3%, whichever is higher.
And one of them's 4% or less.
4% or less.
But the one that's capped, actually, we can carry over any, any amount that's over 3%. So, right now, it's carrying over 0.65%. So, that way, if it comes in at 2.5 next year, we can use 0.5 of that 0.65 to make a whole 3%, but it's capped at 3% on that one particular one, yeah.
Well, that's good clarification there. Okay. Thank you. If we don't have any questions, any comments, then I would entertain a motion.
So, I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 18/19-8 approving annual tax report and authorize not levying a special tax within Community Facilities District Number 2016-02 Glenborough and Easton Place for fiscal year 2018-19 to finance certain public services in and for such community facilities district.
Thank you. So, it's moved by Director Sloan, seconded by Secretary Danzel. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Wonderful. So, we are moving to?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much. So, we are moving to the last item, which is G7.
Thank you Chair Reyes. Item G7 is to authorize the district administrator to execute a consultant services agreement with Roach &amp; Campbell Incorporated in the amount of 27,530 for landscape architectural services and community outreach for the Williamson properties. And I'd like to welcome Christina James to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Reyes and members of the board. On December 14th, 2011, the Cordova Recreation and Park District accepted the Williamson family parcels. The contract that's before you tonight is for community workshop and design services with Roach &amp; Campbell, an experienced local landscape architecture firm, to begin the process of exploring options for the site with the community. With the, with the support of the board, the district hopes to pursue a community enhancement, a Measure H grant for park construction funding from the city in February 2019. Roach &amp; Campbell's work emphasizes listening to the community. The firm is highly recommended by the cities of Folsom, Davis, and the Mission Oaks Park District. The district would look to Roach &amp; Campbell to take the lead during the public workshop process to encourage public participation. The contract includes design work and cost estimating through 30% construction documents, which will allow district staff then to prepare an informed grant application in February. Staff recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the district administrator to execute this consultant services agreement with Roach &amp; Campbell in the amount of $27,530 for landscape architectural design services for the Williamson properties. And I'm available to answer any questions that you have about the contract or the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, board? I, I wanted to see how many, and I'm not sure if it, it is here, how many community outreach meetings, workshops will they commit to, to doing?
So, we're anticipating at least two.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, so I'm sorry, at least four. And then they also include three meetings with district staff and a stakeholder meeting.
So, my understanding here is that where it says on the conceptual design phase, they would provide options, at least two conceptual designs, right, at the community workshop one? So, the question here is, is the community workshop one, the very first time, we're going to have the outreach to the, to the residents or not?
So, for the very first workshop, it will be a listening session.
Okay.
And no proposals would be presented until after that first community workshop.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know of any homeowners association out there or a group that's involved with that area, but I do know that we've had a history of having small turnouts for these type of meetings. So, what are we going to do to get the word out, to advertise, to get out there? And are we going to have it on the property? Or, I mean, where are we going to do this so we can get some people in the room?
I, I think that's a really good point. We have not had public outreach to date on those properties. So, we'll want to explore possibly putting the meeting on our website, putting a sign on the site itself so that the neighbors are aware of these public meetings and that we encourage their participation. So, yes, that, that will be part of Roach &amp; Campbell's approach. They're skilled consultants in, working in cities on projects that, that have been contentious projects that have a lot of different voices on them. So, in speaking to their references, that was one thing that came out from Director Robert Goss with the City of Folsom. And over at Mission Oaks, TJ Newman, they all spoke highly of the way that this particular consultant was able to work with the public and help them, help navigate through the process.
And they're also going to work with Swilburn Farms on this project?
So, so that's, we're hoping to have a stakeholder meeting when the project begins, and the stakeholders would include Swilburn Farms, SAC Tree, and hopefully, the, the City of Rancho Cordova representatives from the city as well. We want to make sure they're part of the process early since ultimately, we hope to submit a grant for the construction.
Okay, so, so this is good. So, the work that we are working, that, the timeframe that they are working towards is to be able to come up with the resident-supported, community-supported design.
Exactly.
So, that then we can seek funding, to grant funding, to be able to support it. One of the things I just wanted to make sure of, and I know that by now, you're very aware of it, is that, that we're able to give some? of it, is that we're able to give some ideas. I mean, some, because it is a piece of property that you can't just say, oh, build a playground here, you know what I mean? It is a piece of property, and I think one of the things is to be able to at least give some kind of, not quite parameters, but ideas of, you know, the activity level for this so that we can also, the need to educate our residents to, you know, some of the concerns or some of the reasons why it may be a less active, probably, I would think, site, you know? And then from there, hear what they have to say, hear, you know, because I'm sure you'll get, you know, there's a lot, there are apartments, so there's a lot of families there that might be really looking to use it, you know? So I don't know, but just wanted to make sure that we brought them into the picture too, the outreach goes out to them.
The hope is that by February, we have a fully vetted by the community project, that we also have good information on the costs and the scope that we can turn in as a solid grant application.
That sounds good. I know that, you know, the corner of Coloma and McGregor, there is like a small strip center mall, and they have the Berthin Beyond, and they have some, lots of community connection there. So I suggest that probably that might be a good place also to find ways to put it out and say, hey, we need some outreach here, we'd like to talk to you, and we'd like to vet this, this process out.
That's good to know.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments to this contract? Then I will entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Directors authorize the district administrator to execute a consultant services agreement with Roach &amp; Campbell, Inc. in the amount of 27,530 for landscape architectural services and community outreach for the Williamson properties.
Moved by Vice Chair Yearwood, seconded by Director Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
Thank you. All right, so we are done with our regular agenda items here, and we will move to Section 8, Board Director, Board of Directors items. So please lead us on.
Sure, thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H1 is Board Member Reports. Item A is Training, there were none for this last period. Item H1B is Board Member Reports.
Thank you. So Board Member Reports, who would like to start? We can start with, do I hear a moan from over there? How about, okay, Director Sloan.
I attended the Brecka Community Steering Committee meeting because I hadn't been there for a while, and I just wanted to show myself present and see if there was any response to anything. Nothing came up, no concerns in the park. They do have their annual picnic potluck coming up September 23rd, which I think is the second day of the airshow, Sunday. And, but otherwise, the Brecka area seems to be very happy with her park. No problems. They know that their walkways on the list to be fixed and repaired, and that's all they really care about right now. Next thing is, today I attended the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts, and we basically recapped the conference. It was the most successful conference to date that we've ever had, even though we did have, I'm sorry that Inez couldn't make it, she had an issue, but a couple other people had issues too, they couldn't make it, so it wouldn't even been, it would have been bigger even. So we're also, you know, debating where we're going to have it next year, and 75% of the people wanted it to be in the same spot every year. And so we are trying to possibly go to a different location, but if we go down south, it limits the attendance drastically because a lot of the smaller districts up here in the north can't make it, can't afford to go down there. But they, they did talk about the Prop 68 and the success of that passing and the certain form, they're forming committees now to see how they're going to get the, the districts are going to have to apply for the funding. And so they're figuring out how it's going to be, whether it's, and I don't think it's going to be per capita. I'm hearing not. So I know that Rick Richards is on one of the, on the committee, he's our ledge guy, and he's keeping us informed of that situation. There was another thing that I thought was interesting that, I'm not sure how we feel about it, but there was an assembly bill that talked about mandatory sexual harassment classes for not just supervisors, but all employees and even seasonal employees, which could impact districts money-wise, I think, if they have to pay for that. So, otherwise, it was a short, short meeting today, actually. It was, it was over by like 11 o'clock.
Good. Wonderful.
We had to wait, we had to wait half hour for lunch to arrive.
That was your social hour.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Director Sloan. Secretary Danzel?
Mine's brief this month. It's actually longer than it has been the last four months, but mine was the annual Ranch Cordova 4th of July celebration down in Hagan Park. Working on the logistics team down there for me, went very smooth working with staff and being able to get things done. Didn't really have a lot of issues that we had to deal with, which is the greatest thing because we do a lot of pre-planning. In years past, we've had some problems and it's run into last minute getting things done. Well, over the last five years, between the Cordova Community Council and the Park District, we've been able to clean up, I'd say, 98% of those issues and get them done. There, didn't really see anything, I mean, didn't hear from, from staff on the ground that, you know, things were bad, they didn't, you know, didn't hear that they ran out of trash bags, things like that, which was really good. I've worked with Jerry a little bit on a broken water pipe, which we, it was, you know, I joked with Jerry, because of broken water pipe, Jerry had to get, get, you know, down on his hands and knees, get a little dirty, and I just reminded him, and that just shows the staff that he's willing to do it. He's not just, he's not just a manager, he's willing to work just as hard as they are, and he did, so. But other than that, there was, you know, like I said, 98% of the stuff is taken care of prior to, so there isn't a lot of things that have to be taken care of, and I commend the administrator and the staff for taking the time to make sure that our park is definitely ready for one of the biggest events that happens in this community.
And it is a big event. Question is, I know that there was talk that Hagan might not even be big enough, you know, because it just keeps growing. Do you know about, have an idea about?
I have not heard of it.
How many?
Chair Reyes.
Attendance?
I know this year, during the 4th of July, I spent the evening, normally I'm behind the stage getting ready to make sure that all the fireworks and the band and everything is coordinated. I handed that off to somebody else this year and spent from 9:00 until after 10:30, 60 feet in the air above, above the crowd, and got to videotape the crowd at the concert. And it was probably, in my opinion, it was probably more packed at the concert stage this year than it's ever been. We had people all the way back in no man's land, so it was, it was really nice to see. And it's definitely a different perspective 60 feet in the air above all that and fireworks going off that, you know, and, you know, when you're a little bit closer to them, and altitude-wise, it's a whole nother ballgame. And I took Steve Harriman from the city up so he could take.
Where were you?
We were right, we were in a boom lift above, right above the pavilion.
Okay.
So right, right, right there in that parking lot, we were above everybody, and Steve Harriman, learned something about him and that he is not fond of heights. So to put him 60 feet in the air, it's definitely a different perspective for him. He, but he survived it and will probably do it again, but it was, it was a good experience for him. He got some great, great footage of it. I was telling Vice Chair Yearwood that later I videotaped the whole 20 minutes of the fireworks show because the fourth show was exactly 20 minutes long, and it's, I would get a chance to show them, but it's definitely a different experience being up there, and the park looks great from up there. So I will have to get staff some of those photos that I have from that event so they've got some pictures of the park.
Did you have your phone?
I had my phone, which I actually have gotten some great photos and videos from in the past, some that have been on display here in City Hall, so.
I think the grapevine estimated 30,000 people on the fourth.
Wow.
I took, I took crowd shots and looking back at the, at the pavilion, it was packed.
It's really getting to be known out there, so a good place to go, to be able to experience it, you know, when people have decided that really it's crazy in Cal Expo when they used to have to go there.
And that doesn't even take into effect the homes that line, you know, Chase.
That's correct.
And the outlying areas of, people just come, sometimes even just come to Mills Middle School and watch the fireworks, so. It's, it was better than ever this year, I'll tell you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, Vice Chair Yearwood.
Why, thank you. I only have one thing to report on. On July 1st, I attended the Unity in the Community event put on by the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department over at Village Green Park. I didn't get there in time to see the helicopter land, unfortunately, but they were out there along with some of their horses and all kinds of different equipment, all kinds of cops were out there. I met up with the former director on this board, Mark Baxter, and had a nice conversation with him. He said the park looked great, so, very happy. I think it was, I don't know, it wasn't, when I was there, I got there pretty much when it first started, it wasn't a lot of people there, but it was a Sunday morning and it was kind of toasty out there, so I don't know if it picked up after I left, but they did a barbecue and all kinds of stuff. The city was handing out cupcakes, it was so hot, the frosting was melting right off of them.
I can imagine.
So, yeah, it was a nice event, a lot of great things out there for folks, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have two items that I was going, I am to report on, and one of it was I did attend the Ranch Cordova Chamber of Commerce Elected Officials Reception. It was July 9th, and Director Lineback was there too. It's just, it was very well done by the, by the chamber. And, and the good thing about it was that it was like from 5:30 to 7:30, and there were no real speeches made out there. She just came up and introduced any of the electeds that were there. Senator Nielsen was there, Ami Barra was there, Donna Toley was there. We had Gary, Garrett, no, yeah, and Garrett, and then David Sander and Terry were there. And there were others there, and it's really nice because you start seeing, putting some names with faces, and that was enjoyable. And then I, I also attended, it was a teleconference for the new board that I am representing, Cordova Wreckon Park District and Special Districts. It's the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members.
Yes.
You know, I can't even remember all those acronyms. Anyway, it was really an interesting experience to be able to participate in a telephone conference, meaning when you don't even know, you haven't had a chance to meet the people. But one of the things I did get out of it was that they were looking for a speaker. They were kind of really having some struggles and they had, I don't know if it's for the CPRS or a certain conference that they were supposed to provide a speaker, and, or if it was a, one of their own home conferences. So what I did was, I thought, I said, you know, the most I could do here is, they've asked us to look around and see, and I, I had a great idea of probably seeing if we had someone on our management team, and that, I said, we have someone on our management team that represents a national, and I'm talking about Jerry. And I said, I don't know if he'd be interested in being a speaker, but I will ask him and I try and have, and they were like, oh, Inez, thank you. I'm like, okay, this is interesting. But anyway, so I am going to go ahead and see about connecting Jerry to their CEO, which is Jim Simpson. Very interesting, and so, sounds like it takes a couple of years to kind of get, get to feel like you, you can participate. Well, let's see. But, so Jerry, if we spoke, and I'll go ahead and submit your name to Jim, and he'll give you a call, all right? And that's it. So we are going to go ahead and move on to the next item, which is District Comments by Staff.
Yes, thank you. Item I1 is the District-wide Monthly Progress Report for July, and I'll turn it over to Administrator Larkin.
All right. So just some highlights from the past month of note. Myself and Clerk Jones met with the Golden State Water Company. We've been planning to meet with them to discuss our water reduction strategies and seeing if there's any way for them to look at putting this on a, what they call an irrigation rate. So we had a great conversation with them, learned about their structure for fees. The next available opportunity for us to bring this fee forward for a potential reduction is in 2020. So their fees have already been established and they have a two-year cycle with those fees. And so they said that they would be interested in having us work with them on identifying a new tier, which they don't have at this point, they only have one tier, but they're mandated to have multiple tiers going forward. So I said, well, what a great opportunity for us to be at the same table, for us to discuss a tier related to parks and recreation, and that they were kind of referring to it as an irrigation rate. So the information has been shared at that point for that particular water purveyor. We are looking forward to meeting with the other two in regards to finding out what our rates currently are and if there's any ability for us to get a reduced rate. So thank you, Clerk Jones, for recording all of that information, it's going to be very valuable in the future. I did attend a CSDA General Manager Leadership Summit. I attended several sessions that are basically talking about building high-performing teams, which we have one, which I'm happy to report, efficiencies in deliberating board trainings, the language of leadership. A lot of it was interesting this year because the, the main topics were more, in my opinion, soft skill-based versus like hard skill-based. So that was kind of interesting to see that perspective in the general manager kind of venue that was kind of enlightening to me. We did host the Unity Day in partnership with the Sacramento County Sheriffs and the City of Ranch at Cordova. That was the first year that the county decided that they would like to have that event in a city. So we worked closely with the City of Rancho to make that happen in our park this year. So great partnership, it was successful, they were allowed to land a helicopter, and so all went well. We also attended the, I attended the Community Council's July 4th celebration, and it was a fantastic event. That was the first year I had gone out there, and it was very, very impressive, very overwhelming, but very impressive. So, great job to them. The, for note, in, for the November 2018 Board Elections, candidates may begin to file their paperwork on Monday, July 16th, which was this past Monday, at the Register of Voters located at 7,065th Street, Suite A in Sacramento. From my understanding, it's also online. Do you want to maybe expand a little bit more about that, please?
Sure. The district has on our website an FAQ available to the public, anyone who's interested in running for the board. So that has a lot of information as well as a link to the current candidate guide. And so what's new this year is that most of the documents required for required for nomination are available online, but candidates still have to file down at the office because there are other documents that have to be signed in their presence. So just to make those board members aware of that. But so far, that information has been very useful to the public and we look forward to providing any other education for those who may be interested.
I think also the candidate statement checks should... Payments.
Correct.
Should be made.
All the payments are done at the county office. Yes.
So you have to go down to the county. Do you know how much it is this year?
$850, I want to say.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving on. Thank you, Danielle. The board approved the refinancing of the June 20th, 2018 loan, which closed June 26th for Opus Bank. They are now the lender of the 2.460 obligation for the refinancing of Mather Sports Complex. That total gross savings for the refinancing is $95,970, an annual average saving of approximately $10,000. The new interest rate is 3.18 compared to 4.55. The loan maturity date is September 1st, 2027. Very strategic of us. I'm proud of us taking advantage of that opportunity and it paid off really well. We'll take the $10,000 savings every year. So that's fantastic. So thank you, Matt, for all of your work and tenacity in working with this group to get that done. I thought that was great. Fiscal year and 2017 in review. The year is over. In June 2018, the monthly district financial report will be submitted on August 15th. Claims report and PRMD financial report will be received or reviewed and discussed at the September meeting. Auditing fieldwork for the previous year will commence in September this year. So that's much earlier than we've seen in the past and we're excited about that.
Yes.
We are in recruitment for a recreation supervisor, too. We've had first and second round interviews and we're in the process of making a placement offer. Also, we are in recruitment for a recreation coordinator, too. Same Mather Sports Center at this time. Thanks to the park staff for prepping Hagan Park for the July 4th celebration. They worked really hard and I was proud to see when I was out there, we had a nice booth out there representing CRPD. We were handing out our 60th anniversary schwag and educating the public on all of our awesome summer programs as well as new offerings coming up in this fall. So thank you to the staff that volunteered their time to be out there on that holiday to promote us so well.
Wonderful.
In recreation, something of note, we are offering a new camp, New Super Spy Camp. And the benefit of this is that it's in the Rosemont neighborhood.
Oh, that's great.
So in July, we're offering the newest camp, Super Spy Day Camp. During each weekly camp, campers, aka super spies, receive missions and leads, the fun activities, and a reward on the last day of camp. So we're really excited to be offering a specific program at Rosemont Park. I know that they've been asking for more enhanced programming. So this is just the beginning of that and it went. And so we were happy to see that, you know, they were saying they wanted it, but sometimes when it comes down to offering it, we don't get registration. So this is a great example of us going forward in that direction, which I'm really happy about. And thank you, Jill, to you and your staff for creatively offering something that is an attraction for them. The park planning and development staff, they've received significant, specific plans submitted for the ranch in the city of Rancho Cordova. We are coordinating the reviews. We have this new consultant that just got hired on tonight. And so that person will be activated very quickly to help us meet the deadlines associated with making sure that they can move their developments forward. There are also staff inspecting grading operations at the Douglas 98 development. The Sacramento County District's Division provided comments regarding CRPD's capital improvement plan for new growth and the corresponding park impact fees. CRPD management is reviewing and preparing the follow-up and having a meeting with the Sacramento County staff related to those fees. This has been something that we've been discussing for at least a year. So we're at the point where Laura and I and now Matt have had several meetings with the county staff on our fees that we need to have them agree on. And they proposed some suggestions for a reduction. We're going back with a counter negotiation and we'll most likely have that meeting in August. We're prepared and we have good justifications for our next round of negotiations. So I will update you as we get further on with that. The goal being that the county approves the fees so that we don't continuously have to have meetings and discussion about negotiating those things. So we're on our way to getting there. In some improvement projects, Olympic land construction finished about half of the Sacramento Valley Live Steamers Irrigation Project in the month of June already. There is a list of grant updates in the chart. And then to bring your attention to some of the future dates that we are looking at coming up, July 20th, obviously this Friday, we have two opportunities. There's one at 8:30 in the morning, 8:30 to 10. It is a ribbon cutting for the park horse, which has been completed. And the city of Rancho Cordova and CRPD will be partnering to do a ribbon cutting to celebrate the partnership as well as the actual park horse. So we would encourage you, if you can attend, be out there for that. It should be anywhere between 8:30 and 10. We're having media show up. So sometimes it depends on when the media shows. But be prepared if you're planning on being out there about 8:30. Obviously, the gala and party in the park is also that same day. The social hour in the gala starts at 4:30, goes till about 5:30. And then we encourage everyone who is able to attend to join everyone in the park from 5:30 to 8:30. For a band, we have the pool open. We'll have vendors. It'll be awesome. And then also on August 11th, we have the 10th Annual Rosemont Celebration of Community that I know a lot of board members have attended in the past. And it's just a great way for us to show our support for that community. In our publicity, we have a biggie this month. In the California Special Districts Magazine, that I'm not sure if you've received or not, but we have in the spread center, the main article on Kevin DeLeon, I am highlighted in a box talking about our industry. So it gives us great exposure as a district, but also on a national level, rarely where we are. So it kind of really meets our vision and mission and goals in that we're the leader of the parks and recreation industry. And so I think this is a great demonstration of that. So I was very honored to be listed in here and they took my entire quote and published it. So I was kind of thrilled by that. And I think it's a great demonstration for not only us, but also for California.
It's on page 21?
Page 21 in the center.
Of this. And I think it's very impressive. And I think that, Patrick, you know, kudos to you that you were able to get yourself on his full story on special districts. I mean, it's fascinating that you get that. I'm sure he put it out there. And obviously, they feel that what you had to say was worth putting on the magazine. So we got our name there. So to the rest of my board members, we said we would strive to be regional leaders and our staff is working towards that and pretty much reaching it. I really think it's very nice to have this. This is something that we need to acknowledge. I like put it on the website, you know, check it out, did you know?
Yeah.
Guess who, etc. It's really good.
I was very pleased by that this month and a little surprised. But with that, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. Do we have any questions? Hearing none. We are going to move on to the next item, which is the informational items. We have the articles and, oh, boy, you guys look so happy receiving the award for, from the CARPD. And congratulations to Terry. And is there anything else that you would like to comment or ask about from staff? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and move on with informational items. Now we're going to go to item K, which is future agenda items.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item K1 is regarding the regular board meeting on August 15th and we are planning our public hearings for the fiscal year 2018-19 final budget adoption.
Okay. And then we do have the board calendar. All right. So unless there's anything else, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Moved by Vice Chair Yearwood.
Second.
Seconded by Secretary Danzel. All those in favor, we adjourn to the next, the next regular board meeting on Wednesday, August 15th at 6:30. Thank you.